All right, I do have 6:30. It is time for our Monday, June the 3rd meeting. We'll go ahead and call it to order. And we'd like to invite everyone to join us in a pledge of allegiance followed by invocation by Commissioner Bill Osborn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your calling for which it stands, one nation, God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our Father, we come to you with an humble heart tonight, Lord, and a thankful heart. Thank you, Lord, just for the life, gift of life, for just being here another day. We pray for our health, my well-being, our safety, Lord. Go with us as we go throughout our meeting to conduct the business of this county, Lord, and give us the knowledge and the wisdom to do a good job. It will be most pleasing unto everybody and especially unto you. We give thee all the praise and all the glory for these blessings, bless in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, we do have one item to add, and it's the reappointment of Commissioner Larry Prince.
For life?
Lifetime?
Lifetime.
That's debatable, I'm sure. We'll put it under, without objection, put it under item two, under consent agenda.
Moved.
Second.
So a motion and a second to approve the adjusted amended agenda. All in favor, make it known, but say an aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Five oh. All right, we do have our minutes caught back up from where Mr. Drew was doing some training. We have a couple of sets of minutes from May 5th and May 20th. Any questions or concerns on those? If not, it would entail a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. All in favor, make it known, but say an aye.
Aye.
Five oh. Thank you, Mr. Drew. All right, at this time, we are to, we'll take up item A, our.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Since the posted agenda says 6:45 on that, we need to wait until 6:45.
We can do it. You're right.
Maybe do the spotlight business now if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we'll wait until 6:45.
Thanks for catching that. Yeah, very, very good. All right, we will rearrange slightly and go ahead and move along to chamber spotlight business. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'd like to start off by announcing our three newest chamber members. International Installation Group LLC. They are professional installers of storage and material handling, material handling equipment. Mountain View Outdoor Services, they provide landscaping, mowing, mulching, graveling, and all other outdoor services you may need. Willoughby's Fine Art Gallery located on Main Street. Gallery featuring works by Will Fernandez, acrylic paintings on canvases, sculptures, and ceramics, wood, stone, and paper mache. This week, Karen and I have been hand-delivering our new chamber membership plaques to the businesses in town. We are very proud of these and are displaying, for our chamber members to display them in their businesses so you know that they are active members. So if you see a sign, thank them for supporting and investing in our chamber. Our spotlight business this evening is Blue Ridge Fiber Fest. Deb Clemens is here to tell you a little bit more about the festival this weekend. Thank you.
I'm so glad to be back here again since last year, and I'm very grateful to the County of Allegheny and the Town of Sparta for all the support they have shown us. We received a nice grant from the Tourism Development Authority to up our advertising, and as a result, we went with the Greensboro News &amp; Record Digital Advertising Group, and they have served over 125,000 digital ads to people who are interested in the fiber arts. Anybody who walked into a yarn shop within 500 miles of here got an ad served to them. When I looked at the analytics later on and saw that they had served that many digital ads, but the integration between the ad viewer and us was only 1%, I called the record and I said, I'm a little disappointed that we don't have better results. And she said, are you kidding? She said, 1% is six points above the industry average. She said, you guys are doing great. She says, and if you look at the analytics on your website, she says, that will tell us more. So I went and looked at the website analytics, and we had 4,000 hits on our website between April 15th and May 15th. So grace yourselves. I think there might be a.
Thanks for the warning.
I think there might be a traffic jam this weekend. We have 75 vendors coming. We have four food trucks, and the Laurel Springs Volunteer Fire Department is going to help with parking, and they're also doing the concession stand, so that's great. The rec department has been wonderful out there helping us get the barn ready for our animals. And we're expecting some sawdust to be delivered tomorrow, and we're just hoping that the circus is leaving town before nine o'clock so that when the rental company comes with our big top, they have a place to put it. But we've been very fortunate to be engaging the community this year. So we went a little bit outside the box for a Fiber Fest, and along with the Allegheny writers, we have been soliciting stories from longtime residents about bring your grandma's quilt, tell us about your daddy's sheep, your mama's doily, whatever, how they learned to knit, how they learned to craft, how they raised the animals that made the fiber that did all this. And tell us the story. We had over 30 people show up to the library on a weekday to tell their stories and bring their textiles. And the hope is that we're going to be able to put all of this together in a book and then sell the book at the next Fiber Fest, which is set for June 5th and 6th, 2020. The chamber has been amazing, and they have made these little bookmarks. I've got one for everybody. The welcome desk. We're going to be taking some analytics on where people are coming from and that kind of stuff, so we're very excited about that. There's another thing that we're doing that I'm hoping each of you will stop by the Mountain Home Spun Fiber Guild tent and contribute to our sculpture of a chick, made out of chicken wire, of an alpaca. So we've built this alpaca out of chicken wire, and we've gotten Gary Medley to make a gourd head for it. So you can imagine how fantastic it will be. We have a picture of a real alpaca to put next to it so that people will know what it's supposed to be. But we're encouraging people to write what they find at the Fiber Fest on a strip of fabric and tie it to the chicken wire. So when we do the time lapse photo of the alpaca being built and it's in full fleece, then we're going to put that sculpture in the chamber offices. Katie's got a stall for them, so. We're all excited. We're working real hard, and we are hoping to bring at least 4,000 people into town this weekend, so. Hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Deb's been amazing to work with, and we're super excited about this weekend. And Sarah Dalton with Authenticy Allegheny, and Karen and I are going to have, play a large presence there. But we have a really busy week, so Music on Main, this is our first of the four four-month series. We expect a large crowd. We have over 15 bands playing throughout within the businesses and on the streets. They've done an amazing job preparing for that. Blue Ridge Grill is also doing a fundraiser out that Friday night as well with music and entertainment and all kinds of fun things. Bark in the Park on Saturday. And again, it's going to be a wonderful weekend. Come out and support. We're super excited. We're very staffed at the visitor center, ready to welcome those coming to our community and to sort of welcome them and let them know what Allegheny is all about. But we appreciate your support and look forward to a great summer month. I think June's, this is just the beginning, and we've got a lot of fun things happening and scheduled event-wise this month, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Chairman, if I may, just want to remind everyone that we have renovated the bathrooms at the fairgrounds, concession stand, the picnic shelter, got a lot of new upgrades there. And of course, there will be Allegheny in Motion Shuttle Services running on Friday between this parking lot, the new town parking lot on Whitehead Street, and the fairgrounds. So parking's going to be at a premium at the fairgrounds, so feel free to park any of the other places, and you'll have a free shuttle ride on Allegheny in Motion. And plus, you can get back to town for Music on Main. That way, go ahead and park down here, go up to the Fiber Fest for a few hours, come back, eat some dinner, come back down here for Music on Main, and then you'll be near your car and ready to go home. So I want to encourage everybody to come out. It's going to be a great weekend.
All right, we'll go ahead and move along to the public agenda comments. At this time, if there's anyone here would like to address, everybody will have plenty of opportunity to speak tonight at some point in time if you'd like to. On the agenda right now, if you'd like to speak on any of those items, now would be the time to come and make it known. Seeing no movement, we will move along to item D, presentations to the board. I see Mr. Green back there. Come on up, Josh.
Drew just passed out what the flyer will look like that goes in with the tax bill. I just received that today. I'm sorry for the late notice, but this is the best I could do. So what I've put in your packet was what I've seen fit would be the three best options for this new sticker system at the transfer station. You know, there's several different questions arising out, you know, throughout the county. Kind of want to get a little feedback from you all to see kind of what your thoughts were, maybe some questions that you may have. I had put some notes together on the, one of the main questions that's been asked to me about a family member coming in, taking their mother's trash off or their father's, who's not able to go to the transfer station. And one of the things that I've came up with is, you know, whoever owns that residence would bring the sticker with them from that residence with a proof, either a copy of the tax bill, a light bill, phone bill, et cetera, to kind of show with the sticker is, here's my sticker, here's where it came from. Is it 100% honest answer? No. But, you know, if someone goes to that extreme of wanting to throw a couple of bags of trash away, I feel like, you know, they've earned throwing a couple of bags of trash away at our transfer station. And that's really one of the main questions that I've got asked over the last couple of weeks, and I just, I kind of wanted to open up to you and see what you all thought about the options that I gave you.
A couple of questions. Where you want to place the sticker is exactly where my base sticker goes.
Okay.
Have you talked to the Department of Transportation to see if we can do that?
I have not.
Would it be possible to place it on a card or something of that nature and keep it in the vehicle so that whenever you come through, you could bring it out and show it?
That's, you know, that's up for discussion. One of the reasons why I didn't kind of go with that in any of my options was the thought of, here you go, buddy. That's my only fear. That's kind of why I was wanting somehow, some way to have it affixed to the car. The sticker also, I know this isn't actually the sticker you're looking at, but it's kind of like your oil change stickers. It self-clean, so it's not going to leave any kind of residue or anything.
The other question I have is from a gentleman. He owns property, pays property tax on a house here in Allegheny County, but he only lives here half the year. He's here six months out of the year. He lives in Charleston, South Carolina. The other six, he will get a sticker and it will cover him because he's paying it, correct?
Sir, and to clarify that, a lot of folks don't understand that if you pay property taxes in Allegheny County, and there is no dwelling on that property, you're not getting charged for a solid waste fee. That's a huge misunderstanding. The only way you get charged for the usage of our transfer station is if there is a dwelling on the property that you own. So when John Doe comes through the scales and he says, oh, I own property in Allegheny County, you know, thank you, but you're not paying your solid waste fee to use this transfer station. And that's just, that's how it is. When I get my bill, if I just own land, I'm not paying $75 for my solid waste fee because I don't have a dwelling. And to make common sense out of that, if there's no dwelling or house on that property, there should be no trash generated from there.
That'd be debatable.
Or if it's on.
If they're coming up and camping on it or something like that.
That's true.
Bringing some in, there's, there's, there's potential for trash. Not as much as a dwelling. I wouldn't argue that, but.
Other thoughts?
How many stickers per household do you issue?
Everyone will get two stickers per dwelling. So if someone owns four properties with dwellings on it in the county, they will get eight stickers. If you own one, you will get two stickers. And then if you have more than two vehicles that you need those stickers on, they'll be available for purchase through the tax office. And that is a charge that I've put on here. You know, there's several options there, so I mean, it's not like we're trying to get rich off of stickers. I'm just, it's one of those things I just kind of wanted to cover the cost of the sticker itself.
Just thinking about if you had different vehicles, you know, how's the rental deal going to work into this? Those people want to come to the landfill. How's this, how's this work?
That'll go back to how I opened this up. You'll have your sticker with you. Kind of goes along with John's question also, but you'll have proof of that residency of where that trash came from with your sticker in place also. So if it's something that, let's just say you rent a car all year long, and you're going to trade it soon as the next year comes in. I mean, my thought would be is to put the sticker on the property tax card, and you just got it ready whenever you come through the dump.
Would there be a problem with the stickers? You're talking lower left, like inspections used to be. Upper left, is there any problem with putting it up there?
Would not be.
I'd rather have it affixed than have it floating around my vehicle.
Right, yeah, and that would be fine.
If it's gone, you got to go replace the thing.
I mean, John brought up your question, and I will reach out to the DMV to make sure, but I don't see that it would be an issue because of you put your oil sticker in your windshield. I don't think, I mean, this sticker, as you can see, is not much bigger than an oil change sticker. sticker.
Would a renter, would the landlord not be getting these stickers?
Landlord.
For that property?
The landlord.
And then they could pass that on to whoever's renting?
It will be the landlord's responsibility.
Potentially, I mean.
Yeah.
And so if.
There you're talking about a portable sticker.
It would be the landlord's responsibility to get the stickers to the people that are renting from them. And the reason I came back tonight, just to further that a little more, is the options, whichever one we decide to go with or add to or take away from or whatever it may be, I'm going to get a sign made immediately to put up and attach to the scale house just so it's out there. We get a little closer to September 1, you know, running in the paper a couple of weeks and, you know, just let people know as much as we possibly can.
You're looking to try to implement this September 1?
That would be after everyone's received their tax bills.
And then maybe a grace period for initial timeframe of some sort?
Yes, I mean, you know, we'd probably look at 30 or 60 days would be my thought as far as, you know, it's going to affect September 1, but I forgot my sticker on my vehicle. I'll remember it next time, so to speak. So, yeah, for the first year, I feel like we need to put a grace period in there.
You're using the dumpster service, the private, that has no effect on this?
No effect whatsoever. You'll still get two stickers in the mail.
If you go over, if you sell your vehicle, you still have to come back then and buy another sticker?
Well, my thought would be is if you sell your vehicle or trade your vehicle in, I would take my sticker out of my vehicle before I do so. But yes, you will be allowed to come here and purchase one.
Can peel these back off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, I'm not going to sit here and tell you it's going to stick to three or four different vehicles in a year's time, but I mean, if you bring your sticker back in to the tax office, they'll give you another sticker to, you know, to see that, you know, you're being honest about it.
What's the cost of your additional sticker?
The sticker cost is basically by the time they're printing and everything's like 22 cents a piece per sticker. So that's 44 cents per two, as far as what's going out in the tax bill.
If an individual goes in the office to buy?
Right now, I've got $5 on it. We can change that, and that's, you know, Rita having to deal with the time and the effort of getting them back out and making sure that the properties are legit.
Looking for action this evening?
I would like to, if, yes, and, you know, to get an idea of which option best suits the board. And if I need to compile options or take away from one of the options, I'd like to do so. And if that's the case, bring it back to you in the next meeting and look for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I've looked over and I like option number two. I do not like option number three, simply because it says all vehicles with no county sticker in the windshield will not be allowed to use the facility. So they're going to go down the road, and as soon as you can see them, it's going out the window, and we're going to be cleaning up side of the road. So I think option number two would be the better option.
One else? And is that a motion?
We'll make that a motion, yes, sir.
Second that.
Motion in a second for option two. Mike, what's your thoughts? Any?
The 20 to three options, I don't have a huge preference one way or the other. So biggest difference in one and two is allowing non, people without a home here to purchase their, basically purchase an annual pass or they can do $2 a bag as they go. They'll have their choice there, so.
I have a question. How did you come up with the $275 figure?
Okay, so how I came up with that number is I took an average of every other week, an out-of-state vehicle bringing in seven bags of trash at average of 30 pounds per piece, and worked that out and came up with $275.
The solid waste fee if they owned property is 75?
It's 75 right now, yes.
It's going up this year, but yeah.
I'm not sure that you can discriminate against non-property owners. If they own property, they would only have to pay 75.
Okay. And that goes back to my earlier answer of if there's not really a house or a dwelling on that piece of property, there shouldn't be trash generated on it. That's why I put that.
I mean, they're already paying property taxes the same as any other property owner. And if they put a dwelling on it, they could reduce their cost by $200? I mean, that's basically what you're saying.
Yes.
I'm not sure you can do that.
Okay.
I don't know, but.
Mr. Chairman, can I modify my motion?
Hang on just a minute. Let's go ahead and finish the conversation.
My whole thought was, you know, if there's not a dwelling there, they're not getting charged that $75. That was kind of where I was going with that as far as, you know, we get a lot of folks that come in across the scales and say, oh, I own property in Allegheny County. And that's, I mean, that's more than anything else.
If they were to pay the $75, then we would be treating them the same as any other landowner.
Right. Only difference in that that I see would be is, are we going to charge them if they own a house and land in Allegheny County? I'd have to, that'd be a good question for Rita because I don't know how that would work on the solid waste fee.
Well, if they have a house, they're going to be getting the stickers anyway.
Right.
So I mean, that's really not that much of an issue. But I don't see that you can penalize people who own real property that doesn't have a dwelling on it and charge them $200 more. That's where I'm coming from. And I don't know the answer to that. It just occurred to me that that looks strange. Like Virginia used to charge out-of-state drivers more for the same violation as they would in-state drivers, and that was declared unconstitutional. And I think that's kind of what we're doing here.
Right, okay.
Eleanor? Yeah, I kind of think the sense of fairness there is not there with that number. We need to do everything we can to make it folks use it. I mean, we don't want to kind of penalize them for, you know, and throw their trash, you know, off the backside of their land if they just own land. Wouldn't it be the same as a dwelling?
I just, I just cut it to 75 on property owners out of state and the other ones, leave it at 275.
Or make it the same, whatever the, if there's a new rate for dwelling.
Could equal to the current.
Solid waste fee.
New solid waste fee.
Whatever the, in that way, if it changes, then this would follow.
Yeah.
Because currently, what is the rate?
75.
75 this year, yeah.
And of course, we're going to have a conversation in our budget process about that, unfortunately. That way, Josh?
Yes.
To just make the cost reflect whatever a residence is.
Residential solid waste fee for that year.
Does that work for you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'd have to motion to accept option two with the modification that the property owners without a residence will pay the current residence fee.
Solid waste.
Solid waste fee, excuse me.
I'd second that.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor of that, make it known by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Five-oh.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks. I'm going to need it.
Now that initial period, you'll get a lot of feedback and you'll just have to be patient.
Thank you.
I've heard more favorable than I have negatives.
Thank you, Josh. We'll go ahead with her.
Budget public hearing.
All right, we'll go ahead and back up to item A since we are past 6:45 to our, we are required by statute, and since we are working on the budget process, to have a public hearing for citizens to come and weigh in, give us their help, I'll put it that way. And at this time, we will declare a public hearing, a budget public hearing. So if anyone would like to come and speak, now would be the time to do so on the budget. All right, seeing no movement, we'll move along to item E, general business.
Chairman, you need to officially say you're closing the public hearing.
Thank you. We, at this time, seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing and move on to item E, general business. I need some help with the first one. Who is Tanner Goodman and what are they training for? I don't have anything in the packet.
He is one of our deputies that handles domestic violence calls. His position is grant-funded. This is some specialized training that he needs. It's 100% paid for by his grant, but any out-of-state travel requires board approval.
Right.
Motion to approve if somebody else is picking up the debt.
And it's in Atlanta. He's going to Atlanta for training.
All right. There is a motion, and I would second that. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, make it known by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Five-oh. All right, in the packet, we have a, an agreement, MOU, with the, regarding the street skate I think pages 17 through 22. I think that has been processed and developed and looks pretty good. Thank you, Donna and Mike and whomever else may have been.
And Whitney, yeah.
Okay.
Appreciate her help as well.
Any comments, questions? If not, would there be a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the agreement with the town. All in favor, make it known by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Also in our packet is a resolution approving finance terms.
You should have an updated copy on your, that Drew handed you. The only change is from 850,000 to 900,000 on the loan amount. We went back and forth a few times and finally said we did settle at 900,000. So that, the one Drew handed you has 900,000 as the loan amount. So I would ask for approval of that resolution.
One most recent resolution should be on your, front of you.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the finance agreement.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, make it known by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? All right, next, item four is the financing agreement and deed of trust.
Do you have an updated version with 900,000 as the updated loan amount?
New number, okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. All in favor, make it known by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Five-oh. All right, we have in our packet another unsolicited offer to purchase a property that we acquired through a tax sale, or rather, I guess, a non-tax sale.
What is that property?
That property adjoins the transfer station, is what I understand. If you go past the entrance to the transfer station, it's the very next property on the left.
There's a single wide manufactured home on it right now.
It's like eight tenths of an acre.
Mm-hmm.
That pickup sits on the right-hand side.
It's on the left.
On the left.
On the same side of the.
So it's on the, okay.
The one across the street from the transfer station, that one sold at tax sale. It's the one behind it there, so.
My thoughts are is that since it joins the transfer station and we're kind of limited, I think we should take a little bit of time to think about this and see what potential needs we may have there with the challenges we're having at the transfer station and the increases and all. But that's, I'm open to your all's thoughts.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman.
We can, I mean, we can if you want to, you know, conditionally accept it, post it for upset bid and then make that decision later. I'm not sure I would want to sell it for $12,000 either. Trying to find it on the map here. Oh, the, where am I here? Too far down, am I?
You're not far.
This is the property right here that is in question. Now, the, I've had several discussions with Josh about what we could do with this property. One idea I had was basically a convenience center for cars, so like we could separate the cars from the garbage truck. This piece of property is really not going to work for that. The terrain, the steep hill there is probably not a good fit for that. One idea that Josh had was if we decided somewhere down the road to build an animal shelter, that would be a good piece of property for that. But, you know, if we had a stronger offer, I would definitely feel, you know, more inclined to try to sell it, so.
See, I mean, if we could do like the last one, we could receive the offer, let it go for upset bid and see if.
I think it's worth $80 to post an upset bid if we get a few. I wouldn't expect many, but.
If anything comes in and see what the price comes back at and then decide if we want to sell it or not. That is, if we would even entertain, you know, selling it if we got a good number on it. Personally.
We can go ahead and put it out for bid and then decide if we want to or not.
We can, but question, I guess, before we do that is, you know, what's the interest of selling it at any price?
Well, we've sold all sorts of other property. I don't see how just putting it out for bid, how it can hurt. We might get a decent offer on it. We don't have to accept the bid, do we?
No, we don't. And you're right. What I'm saying is, if, do you have an interest to sell it if you get a good price?
I think if it was a good price, I'd be interested in selling it for a good price.
We're also in the process of evicting the current tenant as well. Donna has been working on that and.
It's more than just evicting the tenant, it's removing.
There's a, the home is.
The mobile home.
Yeah, it's, we don't own, I mean.
We don't own the mobile home on the property. It's just the real property that we own.
And most states, you know, evicting someone from their primary residence is a lengthy process so that, you know, Ebenezer Scrooge can't kick you out of your house with a day's notice. It takes a long time. And then removing the personal property as well, it's a lengthy process.
Removing the mobile home is problematic.
That forest you're leaving behind, is that part of that protected area?
Are you talking here?
Yeah.
No, that, no, that's not.
Is that part of the property?
It's part of the transfer station property, not this property. This property is only eight tenths of an acre, it's just this little piece right here.
There's no inspection wells on that property that belong to us?
No, no, we've never owned it until a couple of months ago. We took it by tax sale a couple of months ago.
What's, what's your pleasure?
I would think it being joining property for the landfill there, station, that we really should hang on to.
I agree.
It's a potential location for a pound if we go that route.
Never know what pops up down the road.
So no action would be action?
I just don't see what it would hurt, just to go ahead and start the process if we don't have to accept anything.
Wouldn't hurt a thing.
It costs us about $80, that's all it would hurt.
We're going to spend a little money and a little time and create a little commotion potentially and, but if, but if, I don't know exactly where you are, but if there's, the majority of us aren't interested in selling it, it doesn't matter what kind of offer you get.
Are you looking for a motion to retain the property, sir?
Are you looking for a motion to retain the property, sir?
I don't know that we really have to have a motion to retain it. We have it if we don't accept the offer.
You can have a motion, you can make a motion to accept the offer, post it for upset bid, make a motion to reject the offer, or you can do nothing. Doing nothing's always an option in life.
Yeah, table it. So those are the options. Motion to accept, motion to reject, table it, or doing nothing is actually a.
Be nothing at all.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we take it.
Second, the motion.
People? People indefinitely.
Definitely. Table it.
Well, indefinitely.
Somebody, okay. Question?
The offer should have an expiration date on it, so if we don't accept it by a certain date.
Motion to table this offer and a second. Any further discussion?
It's motion to table.
Table it. All in favor of that motion, make it known by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Five-oh. Thank you. All right, item six, fairgrounds stage improvements.
You have a quote in there from Mr. Nugent that did the work in the restrooms and did the roof at the fairgrounds. If you remember from our retreat back in January, the original plan was for the stage that the high school carpentry, construction management, whatever their class is called, they were going to do the work, but they wound up having more projects than they could finish, they could not get to it. So we wanted, and then, of course, the barn or the stables, what this is, the original plan was to tear that down. Then subsequently, we decided we could do some repairs to the stable and keep it for storage. And then the stage, again, we could wait and see if the school, they can fit it in next school year, but it, you know, does need work at this point. You know, Josh thinks, and I agree, that it's a really good, this is a really competitive, really good quote on both of these actions here. If you can do, you can accept one or the other or both, and I gave you an updated, this is where we are with the outdoor recreation fund, totally, we've got $137,000 left that has not been either spent or appropriated at this point. And I would also let you know that next meeting, the school system has requested $25,000 from this fund to help pay for some tennis court improvements. I have the letter, Mr. Beasley could not be here tonight, so we're putting it on the agenda for the 17th. And again, you don't have any obligation to do it, I just want you to know that request is out there for, just for full disclosure as you make this decision tonight.
And what was the possibility of the school being able to do this?
Well, we won't, we won't really know until closer to the school starting. We think, again, they had it on their list this year and then wound up running out of time, not getting it done. I would say it's, you know, somewhere between 50/50 and 70/30 that they can do it next school year.
Only thing we'd have to pay for would be the materials.
Just be the materials then, yeah.
Re-roof, is that what we're doing here on the barn I'm talking about? I can't hardly make that.
Yeah, and repairing some damaged framing.
Is it still usable between now and when they possibly could start?
It is, it's usable, yeah. It is, it's got some rot and some damage. I mean, it's not going to last forever, but we could probably limp through, because we only use the stage for a few events. The fiddler's convention's the main one, we don't use it for every single event, so, but it's near the end of its useful life, as is.
What is this estimate?
Vote Ed something to do next year for the high school.
Hopefully.
It's my understanding from talking to Mr. Brown that he had funds left over from the work that we had done out there already. There isn't any funds left, he didn't expend it all?
I don't think we have this much left, no.
From what I, if I remember correctly, he said that he had enough to take care of the stage, but he did not have enough to, for the staples.
And that out?
They're, they're basically kind of refurbishing the stage.
Yes.
And new roof and painting and a little bit of framing work on the stables, framing repair.
One of the largest, one of the largest events that we have in this county is that fiddler's convention, and that's where that stage really comes in.
I think, I'd like to fix it.
I would too.
The potential at that fairgrounds, and we've made a good start, and I think this would complement the work that's started that they've done down there on the restrooms and the campground and campsites.
I'll make a motion to approve and use whatever funds I had left over.
The motion, does that include the barn work or is this just the stage that we're talking about?
Both.
Both. Couldn't the school do that barn down there? I mean, there's no big rush on the barn.
Well, if it don't fall down first.
It ain't gonna fall down.
Have you seen it?
Yeah.
Gates hanging.
Well, then I walked all the way around that thing. It needs a couple of guys to go put the gate posts back on, gates back on the hinges. Look a lot better.
Well, it's, I mean, it's.
I was just thinking, you know, about the school.
We could find plenty more projects for them whenever they get back around. But this is not the only thing.
Yeah.
Mr. Prince, is that a motion? I'll second that motion.
That was a motion to do both?
Yep.
With any funds that.
Any remaining funds and then any exceeding from the Beamer Fund, am I correct?
So the balance would be paid from the outdoor recreation fund.
What's the motion?
To do both of these.
And not let the high school do it?
No, we'll save them future projects.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? All right, there's a motion on the floor to go ahead with both of these projects at these bid and let it go and pay for it out of the outdoor recreation fund, the balance, whatever he may have left over from the current project.
The excess.
All in favor of that, make it known by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Four-one, okay. All right, consent agenda. Have in your packet a couple of items, well, one we just added tonight, and then a planning board member. Any questions?
I have no, no questions and no objections, sir.
Is that a motion?
I will make it if you would like it.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor, make it known by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, five-oh. Right, public comments. We're there already. Anyone would like to address this board on any matters, now would be the time to come and do it. Seeing no movement, we'll close that and move to county manager comments. You're up, Mike.
First, you have in your memo, and also we have, well, this, as much for the upcoming budget workshops as well, but we finally got our estimate for the amount of 911 funding we'll have coming up this next year, and got a nice increase to 182,000. So we will, when we get there in the budget, we'll update that. We had anticipated using about $20,000 of fund balance in the 911 fund, so basically having 20,000 more in expenses than we had in revenue, this will cut it to about 4,000. So we got about 15,000, $16,000 more than we anticipated, so that's a good thing. Of course, everybody pays that tax on all their cell phones and all that more, everybody has two or three cell phones now, it seems like, so that increases that potential tax money, so. So that's what that is. That's, again, that's as much for the budget workshop, but it's also for, just for public edification. And then we also have updated figures from the Raise the Age, those in the public that don't know, the Raise the Age bill was passed a couple of years ago and it moves more 16 and 17-year-old offenders from the adult criminal system to the juvenile criminal system. And that means we will have to house more juveniles, in theory. Juvenile housing is very expensive. We pay $240 a day, I believe, per person, whereas if we house a prisoner, say in Ash County, we pay him like $50, $48 a day. The state has estimated it will cost us about $8,000 more than what we have been paying previously. But again, juvenile housing runs real up and down. We'll have zero one year and then we'll have double our budget, you know, 40,000 the next year. There's just no way to anticipate that number. But it will, and over, over five years, it will cost us more, whether it costs us more next year, who knows? I know we have had more juvenile offenders lately, you know, it seems like offenders are getting younger and younger all the time. But, so that's just, again, just for public edification. All in all, the Raise the Age is a good thing. The statistics show that 16 and 17-year-olds that are sentenced and, and all that through the juvenile court system have a lower recidivism rate than those that are sentenced through the adult system. So I think it's a good thing, all told, but it will, it will cost us more money in overtime, like everything else, right? Additionally, I want to let you know, citizens know, our new ambulance will be here Wednesday. We're very excited about that. American Emergency Vehicles over in Jefferson has built it for us. It's, I got some pictures of it today and it'll be here on Wednesday and checked out, placed into service, so we're excited on that. The closing on the sale of the old post office building to Heather Klein, we're closing on that Friday, so we're excited about that. Hopefully she'll mow the lawn, we haven't done that. Hopefully she'll do that first thing. And finally, we received the April sales tax numbers this morning and the January through April timeframe, that is four months, you compare 2018 to 2019, we're up almost 16% in our locally collected sales tax over four months. That's about 218,000 to 253,000. And of course, that's just our portion, the town actually gets, actually more than that because the town gets a portion of that as well. That's just our part of it. So it's just tremendous success. Sales tax numbers, you compare one or two months, there's too much noise in the data, but if you have four or five months together, year over year, 10 months, we're up, we're up about 9% for the, for the year, for 10 months, over the 10 months of last year. So encourage people to keep shopping locally, you know, patronizing our restaurants, great events like we have this weekend. You know, I'm hoping that we can collect $30,000 in sales tax this weekend. That's just the county's portion, it'd really be about 36,000, counting what the town would get. So I'm hoping for a big weekend, this weekend in sales tax. And again, the more of that we can collect, the less we need from other revenue sources. So that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner comments, or start to my far left, Commissioner Gunnar.
One thing that surprises me constantly, and there's a lot that surprises me in Allegheny County, we have beat the drum for tourism. Tourism is going to be the great salvation of Allegheny County. The tourists are going to come and they are going to rain dollars from heaven upon us. So Memorial Day, the beginning of the tourist season, two of the largest venues in town don't even bother to open. We better rethink, folks. If you want the tourists to come, you better be open to greet them. Thank you.
All right.
John makes a, are you waking me up?
I'm hoping you're okay.
No, I'm just thinking about what John said, it's very true. And I think that's something that hurts us in this county or town is the variation of opening hours, all the businesses. So, you know, buy local is very important, but our merchants need to unionize and organize to the point that people know what days they're open, what days they're not. I think it's, I think it is sad when we don't have places open, when we expect that people come spend money. That's all I have. Just want to comment on the veterans memorial service we had Sunday, it was, or Monday, it was well-attended. I think everybody was tickled, the way the park looked, the asphalt, the striping. We owe Scott Smith, I'd like to thank him, and our maintenance crew for the painting and the family of Pat Miller for helping fund it, along with the commissioners. Everybody had a, had a very good time and I hope we can get back to selling bricks one of these days. We could have sold 20 or 30, I believe, that day, a lot of people asked about them. And then, I was just curious with, is Donna still working with the council on, or the wellness center about the council on aging, the contract?
Draft. It's in progress.
Okay.
But the draft was completed Friday.
Yeah, I think we're all agreement on the basic terms, it's just they have to finish lawyering it up, so.
So, I mean, we can go ahead and count on that, putting that in our budget and everything.
I would think so.
Yeah, I don't see anything that would stop it at this point, so.
Okay, that's it.
I'd just like to comment on the veterans more, that was a very humbling service over that day and very enjoyable. And, and the whole park is just real nice, especially with the addition of the asphalt there, it really looks good. Looking forward to this weekend, Fiber Fest, that's going to be a big deal for the county. So everybody come out and participate, enjoy it. Thank you.
Come out and participate, be careful on the roads, be careful on the sidewalks.
And bring your wallet.
Yeah.
No, make sure that there's a few places open to spend it.
At this time, I guess we are finished.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Buddy who's not.